Okay, there it goes. All right, it's on.
Welcome, everybody. It's 7:01. Let's, um, to the Village of Washingtonville Planning Board Work Session Meeting. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, everyone, for coming today. This is a work session meeting and there is no public comment at the work session. There was a typo on the agenda posted, which we corrected as soon as we were aware of it. Our first meeting of the month is always a work session and the second is a regular meeting. If you are unable to attend a regular meeting and would like to give comment, you can always email me, which is on the website, selinaroper@planningboard@gmail.com, or certainly you can come to that meeting and give comment. So today we have one item on the agenda. The applicant is Ephraim Halpert, also known as North 36 LLC. 36 North Street, Application for Site Plan, Section Block and Lot 107-2-63, RM Zoning District. Proposed use is a multifamily dwelling with public utilities. Revised site plan proposal includes constructing one six-unit townhouse dwelling and keeping and converting the existing single-family home to a two-family dwelling and removal of the existing garage. Mr. Niemacko, on behalf of the applicant. We're trying something new with the tables today, so hopefully the public can hear you at the table speaking, not just directly to us. So hopefully that works. David, you didn't get a copy of the engineer's comments that were issued today?
Yes, we did.
You did turn them?
I did email it.
Oh, thank you.
And we appreciate that very much. We're happy to be back, spend a little while to progress the plans and the architecturals. I hope you did get in the hard copies, our A10, our C10, which are the architectural rendering of that. It was inadvertently left out in the electronic copy, so apologies about that. And we'll make sure that's included in the next submission or the next version of it. So we received the comments. You know, many of them are technical in nature. We agree with a lot of the comments and we're ready to revise them. I'm sure there's some that we want to focus in on to, so that the project could progress. In so doing, did get permission from the owner to start to mobilize an excavator on-site so that we could meet John out there and start to do our deep hole tests and perp tests to definitely locate or see if the stormwater can be located in that, in the location that we show on-site, or if it needs to be relocated. In response to some of John's comments, we did investigate relocating the underground stormwater chambers away from that swell that's located in the back. The swell I'm referring to, you can see on C1, it traverses the site from left to right and from west to east. And, you know, Pete Wobison in his letter did indicate that that's a swell. It's on a stream, but it is definitely a swell that derves water. We are able to relocate it towards the corner of the property, which would be towards the northeast and towards the south and closer to the road, where John noted that we started tapering the site to create a valley in the front there. That area actually could probably be filled and have the stormwater, underground stormwater tanks located there. It fits in dimension, it fits in capacity. We'll just have to test the soils to see if it'll work. So I'm hoping, if our schedules allow, that somewhere towards the middle to end of next week or the beginning of the following week, we could arrange our schedules accordingly to meet out on-site, have an excavator there for the day and start to test the soils, you know, the deep holes and perp runs. Basically, for us, I mean, that was the comment we focused in regarding the comment letter. If there's any other questions or comments that you have, we're here to entertain that. Definitely, whatever answer I go. I mean, you know, while we're going through it, you know, I could bring up some things that I'd like to have clarified. Do you mind, you see the way we're detailing the services entering the building from, as laterals, any problem with that or? I mean, no, I know your comment regarding the main services being in separate trenches, but when they get to the building and have to split out to the six units?
As far as the layout of it, no. I'm really just looking for more specification. You know, the sewer connection details are either a four or a six inch. Depending on where you look, it could be either one. So we're just looking to clarify what is the size and then have verification. Do you guess that size would be appropriate? What's the material? Is it PVC, SDR, cast iron?
Well, you know, that's an interesting thought. And we'll clarify that on our plans. We'll make them all consistent. The code, recent codes have a little bit of revision regarding the water and sewer service and the building code, the plumbing code in New York. You know, talking about if you have them within 10 feet of each other, they need to be in certain material and things like that. We're trying to comply with it. As, they definitely, this mains will be in separate trenches. There's no question about it. Trench is only 36 inches wide, but they may remain in within 10 to 20 feet of each other.
Within 20 feet is fine. They're not going to be within 10. Orange County, I mean, wherever the building code changes are, Orange County does not recognize that at this point. They require a metal and ten-foot separation. And you've got over 200 feet of perpage. There's really no reason we can't get technically.
We're trying to be efficient. What can I say? All right, just making light there. John, it's not a problem. You know, we'll revise, we'll revise the schematic associated with it.
You know, very similar question with the water main, part of the water service. You previously had a four-inch, now you have a one-inch. A four-inch, well, that's enough for a neighborhood. A one-inch, this is a big house. Seems like you're going to be somewhere in between, but we're going to look for what your final size is and then justification of that size.
So we'll provide a calculation, you know, for that with the gallons per day and then size the pipe. Probably use a plumbing code with that as a pipe.
In regards to the question of how you're going to control traffic in and out of the two driveways, so one, there's something the board should consider at the back of there. It's proposed two entrances to the parcel. As you can see, they're keeping the driveway for the existing dwelling there, which I'm assuming is to serve as that house. And then there's installing a new driveway, which is, runs parallel to the driveway for the cemetery. So I'm trying to think of a way for the board to ensure that the site distances will work and not be a concern with in and out traffic from two parallel driveways. Maybe visuals coming in and out so you could see if it feels tight, perhaps on sandits or something like that as to which way they can turn. I don't know how it would work, if it would work controlling all of those.
One of the things I had to focus to identify, you do reference that some vegetation would have to be cleared. So I bet you I identify what the limits of that clearing are. You know, if it's on subject parcel, if we have somebody who's insert requirements maintenance. If it's on somebody else's property, that's a different issue.
Kevin, your vegetation wasn't great, you know, that needs to be removed. I'm going to imagine right now, from what we know of the property, it's only vegetation associated with this lot that would need to be cleared. And we'll clarify that on the plan.
Okay.
And the site distance, we should definitely show on C2. But which also brings up your comment we got in the traffic study. So we'll go back to Colliers and make sure that they make some mention of acknowledging the fact that this drive is near to the cemetery drive and has that been taken into account?
Right, yes, because you referenced back the traffic study, but I don't believe the traffic study specifically discusses ingress and egress with regard to the cemetery. So if that could be discussed, that would be great.
Yeah, we have no problem with that at all.
As David said, a lot of the comments are technical issues. I don't think we need to go in depth on those specific questions. A couple, you're showing no lighting for the existing building.
Correct.
As well as not progressing to where, if they want to put a light at their front door, they have to come back to the planning board for that. But there will be an approved lighting plan. Deviation from that is going to mean they have to come back here for amended approval.
And just so you know, an amended approval at the Village of Washingtonville is a new application proposed.
So it might be worth talking to them again just to make sure they really don't want anything.
No, no, that's a good point because by building code, we need to have lights at the exterior doors of a residence.
Yeah, that's also a common because the street side has no lighting for the egress there for the doors or anything. And also on the lighting, the pre-existing structure, do you even add any lighting there? What are you going to do with that also?
Well, the pre, the existing dwelling, yeah. So that's what I, we show lighting in the new construction. But on the dwelling, I'll have to review that again. I, again, per the building code, we do have to show exterior lighting at the exterior doors. So we'll need to show lighting for the existing dwelling. I believe, I mean, it's been a while, there's a porch out front, so I doubt if we would go outside the envelope of the porch. I would imagine that whatever lantern-type lighting or recessed lighting in the ceiling of the porch would be within that envelope. So we'll show it in some way or another. But I appreciate you bringing that to our attention. You know, we want to get the lighting approved in its entirety.
And then also with the lighting, in the ZDA amendments, there was discussion about all the lighting being building mounted. But then, just the note we have here is all pole-mounted.
Well, we have some poles and we have some building now.
Okay, well, all I'm seeing in here is pole-mounted. If you want to do all building-mounted, there's no objection to that. It's one of the, get the right lighting levels.
Yeah, well, I mean, I have no problem restricting the lighting to building mount. I don't know how the board feels about the road not being lit going east to west on the site. If that does not, is not a concern, we could easily eliminate the pole lighting.
I'll let the board give their opinion, but I would think we're going to want the parking area lit. Whether you want entry-drive lit would really be more up to you. I don't think lighting at the intersection is a bad thing.
Yeah, I'm just looking at it. It looks, it's going to be busy for the cemetery, the in and out, and then it looks like there's another drive right across the street. I don't know which traffic that sees, but I think they're going to need some kind of lighting there.
So I think you guys are into.
Okay, so we'll, we'll definitely move that pole a little bit more east so it picks up the intersection there.
Yeah, you have the utility pole right there that you're relocating. You can talk to the owner about getting some pole-mounted.
We'll do a coordination. And we showed the two pole lights in the back for the parking. It's a far throw for a building light to definitely catch that whole parking area in the back. That's why we did introduce the pole lighting. But in the front, I want, per the rendering, we kind of wanted to keep it building-mounted, just historic and contextual with the neighborhood.
Yeah, I'm not voicing a preference to one or the other. It's just a matter of whatever it is you plan to include, just include all of those items on the lighting plan.
Sure, appreciate it.
Yeah, and just like before too, as discussed, the pre-existing structure, also the stuff you're doing for that has to be included as well, like it's all in the one plan.
Let's just chat about the stone wall for a second. Your property is inside the stone wall, on the stone wall? Is it just a wall?
It actually, well, the meets and balances on the, on the other side of the stone wall, it looks like.
Based on the submitted survey, the stone wall kind of wanders to the other side.
Is there really any effort to keep that intact?
Oh, absolutely. Oh, sure. There's no, there's no intent on our part to remove it.
But there'll be care used if construction is done, not disturbing or damaging?
Absolutely.
I did ask for additional grading information along that wall. As we get more information, we can go through protections for the wall as well.
Number of bedrooms in the units, two, three, one?
So four bedrooms per unit?
There's four bedrooms per unit.
I'm almost sure of this.
I looked through the docs. I didn't see any about the number of bedrooms.
That's a good question. We didn't get to that detail of the layout of the townhouse yet. But that's something, I can have an answer for you at the next meeting.
And does the number of bedrooms affect the parking spaces required at home? Or is it just the square footage?
No, it's on a per-unit basis.
So does that, one bedroom or 10, same amount of parking?
By the code, that doesn't stop you from having opinions.
It would, I do want to clarify though, the intent is not to have 10 bedrooms. It's a 2,000-square-foot townhouse. So you incorporate a kitchen, a dining room, a living room. You know, you're left with maybe 1,000 square feet divided by 120. So at the max, it would be four bedrooms, maybe three bedrooms and a den, something like that. But just, I don't know, it's physically impossible, but it'd be very difficult to have a lot of bedrooms in that amount of area.
Do you have any kind of floor plans worked up yet or?
Not yet. I, we can't wait to get to that place. But we, I will tell, I will share with the board, I mean, to produce the rendering, we did do a conceptual floor plan of the first and second floor. Because, not to go into great detail, but you generate the floor plan and then that generates a 3D model, you know, associated with it. So we have preliminary schematics, probably without wall differences, but definitely some areas laid out. So if the board wants to see that, we can definitely make that a part of our next submission.
Well, you will have to commit to a number of bedrooms when you get to the board and sort of sizing.
Sure.
Because that will be the basis for your design goals.
I agree.
And these are for sale or for rent?
For sale.
Does that include the existing dwelling?
That's for rent. No, I think, well, no, you can't. You have two apartments in one structure. That wouldn't be possible. So I'm almost sure that would be for rent.
I think the ZDA amendment said that it's going to be owner-occupied.
It did say that.
In the existing dwelling?
In the existing dwelling.
I don't recall that. I.
It definitely says in the ZDA.
Yeah.
Put down the minutes.
I'd like to, can I get a copy of those minutes?
Yeah, I don't know if they, I don't know if they've been, I don't know if they're like the official minutes, but I can share the draft with us with you.
Yeah.
All kinds of lists.
I, I would not imagine I could.
Exactly, yeah, I saw the minutes, but that's fine because I'll be happy.
And so as he came from you.
Yeah, that, we need to clarify that owner of the property occupied, no. Whoever buys the units, they would have to occupy it. That the building will be owner-occupied. I.
I could mean that you're selling each of the two units in that building.
It could. You know, I'll have to clarify that because that was definitely not, the owner, the current owner is not intending to occupy.
And then sort of clarify with the ZDA.
Yeah. Or I'll definitely make that clarification without question.
And one of the other issues you might want to get some feedback on, landscaping. Right now, they're, they're showing a landscape plan. There's, I believe it was 11 proposed trees and seven proposed shrubs.
And I felt I read that for every tree removed will be replaced in addition to.
It's.
Are you showing which ones are being removed?
On the C1.
To the right of the building as you're looking from around.
I'm going to do electronic one, so I think obviously. Is she did it on?
She means C1.
Oh, she did. Wait, that's how.
No, I haven't.
Was it that one?
So I don't know if the board has any input as to what proposed plantings you would like to see. Right now, it just says trees and shrubs.
I mean, if that's a tree, they should be removed.
And wood edges?
To avoid any site impact.
You know, whatever input you have, do you want evergreens? Do you want deciduous? Are there specific species you'd like to see quantity-wise? Do you feel that's adequate? Do you want to see more? Typically, there's some kind of plantings around the building. They're showing sidewalk right up to the base of the building. I don't know if there was plans for garden beds around it.
We can pull the sidewalk away.
It's a question. It's not that you have to.
I mean, I, you know, kind of like the English garden book. You know, we have the tree lines on each side of the sidewalk coming from North Street to the building. I, I mean, me personally, I like that tree line kind of effect, that look.
I'm actually on C2. Yeah, it looks like you got some old trees, you know, zigzagged trees.
Correct.
That could be down in the trees. Yeah, and up front, some kind of low edges or shrubbery established. Cars won't be obstructed, don't worry about that. But I think that looks, you know, presentable.
Does the board have a preference as to those being evergreen or deciduous?
I'm a big fan of evergreen stuff, you know. You know, they just look good all year round, kind of hanging there pretty well with the snow down here. White pines do quite well.
What, white pine as opposed to blue spruce or?
Well, I mean, spruce is going to do fine too, but just saying, just either one is fine.
You, you may want to consider one that deer don't like or else they'll be gone. Can we find one? Do deer eat everything in sight?
They do, they do not like certain evergreens.
Oh, okay. I can't name them. I know it's true. I used to have two in my front yard. One was eating. We had caught the other one. Stay.
Project DC has certain patterns on, deer resistant or?
We're involved with another project where this is, is a real, it's a more of a higher concern because it's right next to Heritage Trail and the deer definitely are close to the site. And they gave us a list of trees that they would prefer and are considered deer-resistant. We can share that list with the board. And actually, I think we just received it yesterday or today. And we can share that with the board and, you know, and make our selections from that. I think there were about six options.
The area behind the building, behind the rear park, or not, just one?
Just one.
So I'm just a little bit confused because I didn't, I guess I didn't realize that these were for sale? The units?
The townhouses?
The townhouses?
To best of my, yes.
Is there going to be like an EJOA or?
There would have to be, you know, people around that route, absolutely. And, and, you know, I don't want to be ambiguous. I'm going to get a clear answer on that for the next meeting.
Yeah, I think that's an option we asked though. About for planning on EJOA?
So EJOA, number of bedrooms, maybe a landscape plan?
Well, we have one. We'll enhance that landscape. We plan with more specific trees and plantings.
And the lighting with reference to the existing building plan?
Yes.
And then I was thinking the dumpster enclosure. It'll be kind of tight to get the garbage truck all the way down, turn left, then all the way back down there and back up and multi-point turn it back out again. Can it be a street shop all the way to the end of the driveway and have a dumpster enclosure just at the end of the street driveway?
I mean, I was trying to hide it. If you wanted, you're talking about on the, on the west side of the, of the new driveway down at the end? I, I mean, yeah, it would, it would definitely be a great place to put it. We, well, I'm just repeating myself, but we were trying to hide it, you know, back over there so it wasn't out in the open. So if the board wants it there, it's, you know, that's fine with us.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the front things, just looking at the front things.
I do think if it is possible to move the stormwater up to the front there, that would be good.
I'm hoping to have a definitive answer on that, not just based on design criteria, but based on field designation. So that'd be great. Actually, it's, it almost evolved a little bit. We started, as you can see, working with the front area between North Street and the building. And it just started to evolve. And I'm thinking that that area might work out well. It'll be away from the swell, will be a little more uphill, close to the street. Again, as I mentioned earlier, it does work in capacity and in dimension. But let's see if it works, you know, in the field.
I think getting this stormwater up front is going to be challenging.
Oh, yeah, probably.
The parking area behind the building is about 10 feet lower in elevation.
Also, just having a perious surface in the back and then having the stormwater bring to there just makes more sense. I feel like it's more easier, because it's a bit easier, very kind of this, as you tell me.
Jump in.
Just makes sense, right?
Well, you know, we, I mean, we established the basement finished floor at 328. The existing grade where we're showing the stormwater is 326, only two foot difference. I realize that groundwater is 2.4 feet below that. I realize that groundwater is two point four feet below that. So two point, two and a half feet below three twenty-six is three twenty-four, so we're four feet below the basement elevation. And we have to be three feet above the groundwater, so it brings us back up to three twenty-seven, which is only a foot below the basement. In elevation, it works in the back, there's no question of it.
Three twenty-seven with the bottom of the infiltration area?
Correct. And then you have five feet of infiltration, so looking down and up, you know, bringing in control fill, you know, control curve. And I think, you know, I, I, you know, I, again, my, our first intent was to put it in the back, and with grade and with the current elevation, it works, it definitely works. But I do, and I'm not gonna ignore the fact that that swell keeps coming up in the discussions, I wanna kind of address that on-site, and take this out of the realm of concept and more into the realm of reality.
Now, the swell that's there, what's gonna be done to make sure that it continues to run, so that adjacent properties aren't affected by backing up?
Well, it's not running from where to where. As you look on, on...
It's collecting, or now it's collecting from this property and the adjacent properties.
Well, now, now, with the new stormwater, all the water will be collected to that system in replacement.
It's not a swell, it's really more of a low point in the neighborhood. The surrounding cemetery property is significantly higher than this local. And there's a few spot rates in the topography to show we go up as we go to the other side, running down more slowly. So this property is somewhat more bold in the backyard.
So if that swell goes away and the stormwater system fills up, this property's gonna fill up before any other properties will be affected?
Well, the, the plan is basically showing filling the hole there. And it'll be the applicant's job to demonstrate that that's not gonna cause any problems.
So with regard to GML 239 referral, this is not, if you're far enough away from the state road to not hit that, but you are five hundred feet within county ad district, and I don't know if there are any active farm operations. I don't know if you want to have a more motion to just do a 239 GML referral to cover our faces, or if you wanna do some investigation as to whether there's an active farm operation. Also, I don't know if any county brightens ways, I don't even know.
No, I, I would...
Oh, okay, okay, but never mind.
No, I think the board should plan themselves, the agency sent it out to 239 referrals.
Okay.
I mean, we're at a point now where we should get the comments from the emergency services, March County Planning.